Okay, the time is now five P M. And I call this administrative meeting of the City Council of Ozark to order. So we are going to begin this evening by a celebration proclamation. And I'm going to ask Councilmember Jackson if he will come up to the speakers and do that proclamation for us.
Thank you, ma'am. First, I want to say that I'm deeply honored and, you know, it's just a great privilege and a pleasure to be able to give this proclamation in honor of my granddad. And to be honest with you, it is not of my doing another grandson by the name of Sammy Jackson. And he lives in Jacksonville, Florida. He was the catalyst behind all of this, such as contacting City Hall, you know, for the purpose of having this proclamation done in granddad's honor. And I'd also like to say that my grandparents had twelve children, eleven of which survived. So it was a large family. So on behalf of the City of Ozark, this proclamation states, whereas Dale County was created by an act of Alabama legislature on December twenty-seventh, eighteen twenty-four, and is celebrating two hundred years of history with the things, shared the moments, shared the memories. And in accordance with that thing, we remember an important figure in Dale County's history. And whereas seventy-five years after the creation of Dale County, Alabama, a young man by the name of Judge Jackson would arrive in Ozark, the seat of Dale County, in eighteen ninety-nine with fifty cents in his pocket and little form of education. And whereas Judge Jackson would become a well-known citizen of Ozark and Dale County as a former businessman, author, musician, composer, and teacher. And whereas from an early age, Judge Jackson was a lover of sacred heart singing and learned shape note music from his family and peers. Initially, he composed lyrics to shape note songs and later progressed to composing sacred heart music and teaching others. And whereas one of the most notable of his endeavors is the book, The Colored Sacred Heart, an important document of early twentieth-century shape note singing, which was self-published by Jackson and his associate Bishop J. B. Walker during the Great Depression. And whereas The Colored Sacred Heart was the first and only sacred heart songbook written by an African-American at that time and included eighteen of Jackson's original compositions and twenty-four pieces he altered or arranged. And now forth, therefore, be it resolved that Mark Blankenship, Mayor of the City of Ozark, Alabama, on this two-hundredth anniversary of Dale County and in recognition and celebration of Judge Jackson and his many contributions to sacred heart music, do hereby proclaim Saturday, April twenty, two thousand twenty-four as the Judge Jackson Day of Celebration and encourage all to attend and participate in the eighty-ninth Annual Judge Jackson Memorial Sacred Heart Singing Celebration, which will be held at the First Missionary Baptist Church in Ozark, Alabama. In witness whereof, I have a peer on two set my hand and cause the great seal of the City of Ozark to be affixed on this sixteenth day of April two thousand twenty-four. Mark Blankenship, Mayor, Chris Peters, Chief Financial Officer, City Clerk. And at this time, I would like to call another grandson, another by the name of Carolyn Jackson. If he would just have anything, he would like to say, who's in the audience today?
Good afternoon. First of all, I don't have very much to say. I like my grandfather. Once and I don't think you remember him, but I remember him well. Very few words. Stern man. I remember asking for a nickel. He would always give me a penny. And he would always say, you need to understand what money is coming from. And I learned later on in life. But I just want to thank the city for honoring my grandfather. You know, sometimes I get emotional. I think about the struggle that he had to go through to make it. He walked all the way from Montgomery County to Dale County, fifty cents in his pocket. And guess what? He made it.
And Carolyn is right. I was not quite two years old when he passed away.
Thank you, gentlemen. For the moment, we are going to skip the presentation of the certificates of commendation. Those people have actually summed up, so we're gonna hold off on those.
Let me just read it and tell them about it.
Sure. Oh, yeah.
About two, three weeks ago, Charles, we had a situation on Strickland Road where a fire was started. And there was a guy walking up and down the road that had been seen earlier in the day. But anyway, one of the neighbors came to us and asked us to recognize these three people. And I'm just gonna read to you what it says. This certificate is awarded to Susan Harper, Von Peel, and Sean Filipowski, who swift and courageous actions prevented a devastating fire that led to the apprehension of an arson. Demonstrating outstanding alertness and bravery, they protected our community from imminent danger, implying an unparalleled commitment to the safety and the well-being of our citizens. They basically put the fire out and they identified the guy. And Charles and them were able to make an arrest. And we just wanted to recognize them. And for one had to work late, one had a sick child, those kind of things. They couldn't be here. But the neighbor needs to come by and pick them up. And we presented them to them. So just before we talk about them.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you.
Charles, you need to say anything about that?
Yeah, I think just so y'all know this, you know, in law enforcement, solving a county crime is also one of the hardest things to solve. And we had had certifiers the day before in our own five seven U. P. Cup, North America. So I'd say this, this is why it's important that citizens, if you see something, say something because it helps us to able to solve this. And by their action, we were able to stop.
Wonderful. Thank you so much. And please give them commendations from us as well. Thank you. Okay, so at this time, we will go over the agenda for the next meeting. So after a call to order and prayer and pledge allegiance, we will review the minutes from the regular council meeting that was held on April second, two thousand twenty-four. Council members, do you have any questions about those minutes?
No.
Okay. Item number four is to set the agenda. Item number five is a first reading application, retail beer off premises only and retail table wine off premises only. So Director Ward, would you like to come up and speak on that one for us?
Yes. And Madam President, I'm hoping you can do this. Now, I think this should be a first and a second reading. It's just a name change of a business that's already established. And it needs to be a first and second reading.
If it, so, okay. Council members, does anyone have any issues with changing it to a first and second reading?
No.
Okay. Okay.
We have, we have no objection.
You have no objections. Okay. For first and second reading. So at that time, if whoever makes the motion, y'all will just remember first and second reading. Okay? The, thank you, Director Ward. I appreciate it. Okay, number, item number six is a resolution for a CDBG resolution for a street project grant.
This is the money y'all should be all familiar with.
Yes.
So that's the, that we got for our grants. It's a little better. And I recommend that y'all look.
Yes. Council members, do you have any questions for Ryan on accepting the grant, the block grant for the street projects?
Is that good?
Yes. We're happy to get money to continue projects.
Definitely.
Thank you. Item number seven is consideration for setting a public hearing for May seventh at five P M. on the revision of the A A C Housing Project Economic Development Grant. Hi, Ali, would you like to speak on that for us?
Sure. This is just asking you to approve a public hearing for May seventh. This is an agreement that has already been approved. Their attorney just came back and said, hey, we need to redo this as a formality because they are reassigning the lease and the agreement to another company within their company. So it's really, it's things we've already done. It's just approving a change within their company.
Okay. Council members, do you have any additional questions for Holly on setting that public hearing on May seventh at that time?
This won't slow down any construction.
No, not at all. It's moving fast. It's, they're ahead of schedule. It never has.
Wonderful. All right. And item number eight is the same type of thing, setting a public hearing for May seventh, two thousand twenty-four at five P M. on the car wash two thirty-one for most.
Yes. And these agreements have already been approved, except that we did put a cap on the rebate for the sales tax for building materials that they purchased in Ozark during the first year. So we just set a cap at ten thousand dollars. They think it won't even be that much, but that way we just have a limit to that. The other things that already been approved, the utility board discounts and waiver of the setting meter and the building permit. So this is just the form, the general agreement. So we'll have that public hearing on May seventh. Thank you.
Thank you. Council members, do you have any questions for Ms. Holly on this, on this particular? Remember, we're just setting a public hearing for that day.
I read over it and it apparently to me, it mentioned the rebate of the sales tax on building materials, but it didn't have in Ozark specifically specified. So I just wanted to make that.
It did. In the agree, in the project agreement.
Right, right. Maybe not in the upper part, but, right. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any additional questions for her? Thank you. Okay. So with that, and those are all of our agenda items for this evening. So with that being said, I will go out. Are there any department heads in attendance that have any comments or questions on any of the agenda items this evening? Is there anyone in the audience that has any comments or questions on any of the agenda items this evening? Is there anyone in the audience that has any comments or questions on any subject in particular? Okay. So with that, I will go to final comments. Mayor?
Okay, several things. I did want to let y'all know that there's legislation in Montgomery. I was not aware of it until one day last week, but it is changing the S S U T percentage from eight percent to nine and a half. The nine and a half will be split by the school system getting only the one and a half percent will be split where the school system gets thirty-five percent. The balance of it will be split between city and county government in the same manner it's split now. The state's fourth C N personally will not be included in that one and a half. Now, don't get too excited about that. It's not passed that way. That's just the way it reads right now. So, but the school system lobbyist, from what I understand, is in agreement with that. So that should move forward and that's close to that way anyway. The baby box that we were doing is installed. We're waiting on Harris Security to do their part. And then we'll put the signs up and that'll be ready to go. And if we can get Michelle and Christine out and do a story on it. The relocation of the utilities on our access road scheduled to start this week. I'm not even sure that they get started yet.
I don't think so.
Okay.
We're digging out there a little bit.
Where are they digging?
They're digging.
No schedule to start yesterday. The development across from the Aviation College that we've been talking about, we're still talking about that a little bit. And looks like there's a possibility we may have a new traffic light that could go in there. So that would be a big help for us. Ryan and his crew is getting ready to lay the sod around the pad behind the Holman House. We hope to get that landscape cleaned up. The bail property, we haven't talked about that much, but that is moving forward. It's kind of in bail's hands right now. There is an offer there. We're waiting to see when we get all that work out. The employment brochure that we had put together on May the second, myself along with the police and fire, going to Carroll High School to present that and talk about that to the, I think it'll be juniors and seniors, but at least seniors. So hopefully we get a little interest in people coming to work. Our airport bathroom that we ordered has been delivered. We're waiting on Greco to lay some block on that. And it'll just be a short time before we can have that up and operating. We're still working on some pricing on the friends of Marier Aviation parking lot and some fence work out there. But hopefully we'll have that presented to y'all shortly. Y'all heard us talking about the geo fencing that we did at the Crawdad Festival. And I'm gonna email this to y'all. I forgot to do it already. But it's a little scary what they know about us and our travels, if you have a cell phone. But it's really interesting. And Michelle and I have already talked about this a little bit. But we had fifteen thousand nine hundred visitors on that day. And the average state time was a hundred and forty-three minutes. And you can spend hours going through and looking at this, but it even breaks it down and tells us what percentage of those people were actually here at the different hours of the day. And it actually tells us how many people was, it says at Bear Fields and Blue Gavale. I don't know if that's actually in the store or right there at the entrance to the store. But I do know that their sales numbers reflect these high numbers. So it's really interesting. And one thing I wanted to point out that, and I'm not gonna call businesses by name, but when a business does eighty or ninety thousand dollars worth of business a month, and they do ten or eleven thousand dollars in a day, that's a big shot in all of these local businesses. And we're having that happen. So, so it's huge. But anyway, I'll send that to y'all. And we're gonna put together some stuff that where Ozzy can use it for future advertising and promotion of things. And along that same line, we have decided that we're going to have the first ever Wired Grass Street Line Dancing event. It's going to be, let's see, I thought I wrote the date down.
June four.
Yeah, June fourteenth. It's on a Friday night for about four hours, I believe. But Ozzy's gonna do a good job advertising and promoting that. I think we got a little money to help do that. So we're looking forward to that being something different.
That's what the county said, right?
Yeah, it'll be part of the two-hundredth celebration. It'll be something we did during that year. So I want to tell you, the Elba inmate work program looks like it's off the table. Their paperwork read one way, but when we met with them, they don't have the means to deliver them and pick them up. So going back to what the Elba, you know, thirty-one miles away in the morning and evening, it's not, doesn't work out very well. We reached out to Paul Lee with A R T, because when I was a county, we used them for a while. They were a little bit too pricey. So we got a, got a lady looking, do some hiring in the house to pick up some, some trash. And the last thing is the planning commission approved Taco Bell last week. There is some sewer issues that they're asking us to help with. And there's three out of partials out there. One next is actually, one closer down to Wendy's and then one behind Wendy's. So we've asked the developer to look at coming up with a price to run that, to pick up all three of those partials. We've also talked with the property owner about possibly, if we were able to help with that in some way, would he repay that parking lot? So we're hoping to be able to put a deal together that we're accomplished all that on town. So we'll see. Just don't worry. We're also working on, we put it out for bid to replace the roof on the, to put a TPO roof on the pickleball courts at the church. We have leaking issues in both of those. And so we'll be telling y'all more about that in a bit. I'll let us all in.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor. Councilman and figure?
I just wanted to compliment the police department, police department, everybody that worked with it. I don't believe I've ever seen one go any smoother than that one went. I was down there at five thirty and pretty much all day. And what amazed me is how quick they clean up there. I don't know if it's like they just wave, it's gone. But it's gone like it never happened. But all those guys and ladies, they did a tremendous job.
Thank you. Thank you. Councilman Jackson?
Well, I guess I go with, Councilman, everything was said, and all the departments do a fine job.
Thank you. Thank you.
Yes. Thank you. Councilman Harrell?
I just have a couple of things. One thing, I'll have more information later down. Sam and Anne Phillips and I were putting together a fundraiser to upgrade the concession stand that's at East Gate with soccer fields. They, they don't have running water there or a sink. So I've, I've found a concession, a portable concession sink that has the three different section sinks. It's got heated water and it's got the gray water. So what you basically do, you bring, it's got a big container where you fill up the water, bring it in, hook it up, plug it into the water heater, it heats the water up. And then there's a gray water container that everything that washes out goes there and you just take that away and drain it out. But it will allow the soccer, Carroll Soccer Boosters to be able to offer more product to sell. They could do chili sauce, barbecue. And so all the kids and parents that are out there will build a, have a different variety. They can have their supper and stuff out there while they're, their kids' games and stuff like that. So we're, we're putting that fundraiser together, looking, looking forward to seeing that come to fruition. And also part of our new ADA playground equipment that we're trying to raise funds for too as well, Quonos Club of Ozark, there, there's a Quonos International grant that you can apply for. And there are a couple of times during the year you can, you can do that. So I'm getting all the information that I can. And I'm gonna get it with Selena to let her look over that because she knows more about grant writing everything than I do. But it basically, it tells all the different things that, how it goes into priority to be able to possibly get that. So hopefully we can maybe get a Quonos International grant for that ADA playground towards, towards getting that completion. So hopefully that will help out. And that, but that's, that's, that's it.
Thank you. Thank you. Councilwoman Carlo?
Yeah, I'd just like to echo Crawdad Festival was awesome. I'd like to commend Ozzy and his staff. They had a good variety of music this year. And we had two stages going, which was a feat in itself, catering to musicians and all that required, that's required in that. So I think they pulled that off pretty good. And yes, and of course, the street sweepwork for public works was out there. We could explain that at home. We had a show that night and you couldn't even tell that they had anything going on downtown. So that's good. And polls are open until seven. So if you haven't already, make sure you get out and vote.
Thank you, ma'am. And that's, yeah, they said everything. I said, congrats on Crawdad. Everybody, don't forget to vote because the polls are open until seven. But the only last one is, as a chaperone for Carroll High School's prom, I have to thank Ozzy's team at the Civic Center. I was over there helping them set up for it and helped, I was on the team that helped take it down. But Harry and, her name just escaped. She, yes, they were extremely helpful in anything that we possibly needed. And so, I mean, and they don't know the teachers from Adam. And I know that they know me, but they were being that nice when I walked in. So please give them a big round of thanks. It was, everything went off without mention. So at least for my perspective.
Madam President, before you go any further, I would be remiss if I didn't say this because very seldom would I miss one Crawdad Festival. But it was a coincidence this year that the Third Region AUSA Association United States Army Annual Meeting was going on in the state of Mississippi, the Magnolia Chapter. And we had seven members from our area here, from the Fort Novaciel chapter in Mississippi representing Fort Novaciel during the weekend of our Crawdad Festival. So if you didn't see me, there, that is the reason why. Thank you.
So with the, yes, sir.
I don't know if y'all are aware of it or not, but we, last week, we had a groundbreaking on A I T barracks on Fort Novaciel. And I think that speaks volumes for protecting Fort Novaciel. That's over a hundred million dollar investment out there on that property. So it's a big, big deal. And that's, that was one day. And then two days later, we had the ribbon cutting on the new added museum training center that's right behind it. I forgot what the price tag was on it, but it, a lot. It's very nice. But that just goes a long way in protecting the organization.
Okay. So with that being said, I will call this meeting to a close and we will begin the next meeting in three minutes. I call this meeting of the City Council of Ozark to order. We'll begin this evening with a prayer led by Councilman Jackson and the pledge of allegiance led by Mayor Blankenship.
Lord, we tell this evening, and I'm a man, we know how, thanking for the many blessings you bestowed upon us. Realize, Lord, that you bless each one of us, that we might be a blessing to someone else. Heavenly Father, we pray for this council, for the mayor, that we will do the right thing that's pleasing in your sight. Heavenly Father, we just ask your continued blessings upon this city and all the city employees and the residents of ours. Please another blessed blessing in your son Jesus Christ's name. Amen.
Amen.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, gentlemen. At this time, we'll review the minutes from the regular council meeting that was held on April second, two thousand twenty-four. What are the wishes of the council?
Madam President, I read that we set the agenda, editing item number five to first reading and second reading.
No.
Oh, geez.
Getting ahead of myself. I moved that we approved the, accept the minutes from the regular council meeting held on April second, two thousand twenty-four. Thank you. I do have a motion on the floor. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Do we have any further discussion on accepting these minutes as, as presented? Thank you. And thank you. All in favor of accepting the minutes, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Item number four is to set the agenda for this evening. What are the wishes of the council?
Madam President, I move we set the agenda as presented.
Add the second.
Oh, add the second reading to the application for the retail beer conference.
Okay. I have a motion on the floor. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Do we have any further discussion on setting the agenda as amended? All in favor of passing the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. I apologize. I am, I'm taking double notes this evening. Item number five is first reading application of retail beer off premises only and table wine off premises only. What are the wishes of the council? Oh, and second reading. I apologize. First and second reading. What are the wishes of the council?
Madam President, I make a motion that we accept the first and second reading application. Move first approval for retail beer off premises only and retail wine off premises only. The name Superstation L L C.
Thank you. I do have a motion on the floor. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Do we have any further discussion on accepting this first and second reading application? All in favor of passing the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Item number six is a resolution for a CDBG block grant for a street project. What are the wishes of the council?
Madam President, I induce resolution, CDBG resolution for a street project under L R.
number LR-CM-SPF twenty-three zero fourteen and this is an amount of four hundred and three thousand dollars for progress construction, remember it's approved.
Thank you. I do have a motion on the floor, do I have a second?
Second.
Do we have any further discussion on approving this block grant? All in favor of passing the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Item number seven is consideration for setting a public hearing for May the seventh, twenty twenty-four at five P.M. on the revision of the AAC Housing Project Economic Development Grant. What are the wishes of the council?
Madam President, I move consideration for setting a public hearing for May the second, twenty twenty-four at five P.M. on the revision of the AAC Housing Project Economic Development Grant.
Thank you. I have a motion on the floor, do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Do we have any further discussion on setting this public hearing? All in favor of passing the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Item number eight is consideration for setting a public hearing for May the seventh at five P.M. for the Car Wash Two Thirty-One Proposed Economic Development Grant. What are the wishes of the council?
Madam President, I move in consideration for setting the public hearing for May the seventh, twenty twenty-four at five o'clock on the Car Wash Two Thirty-One Proposed Economic Development Grant.
Thank you. I have a motion on the floor, do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Do we have any further discussion on setting this public hearing? All in favor of passing the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. There being no further business, Mayor, would you like to make any final comments?
I'll have a second.
Thank you. Councilman Enfinger? Councilman Jackson?
Good.
Councilman Harlow?
There's a big event down, well, it's called Downtown Saturday evening after six, there's gonna be a cruise in and live music on the square, so if anybody with your own cars, I invite you to come on down and take part.
Thank you, thank you. All right, so there being no further business, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any further discussion on it?
No.
All in favor of adjourn, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes unanimously. I call this meeting to a close, thank you.
Thank you.